Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the School Town of Munster Board of Trustees this work session to order. We do not have to, well, we can. We can make, say that roll call that all five board members are present and accounted for, but we do not have to stand for the pledge of allegiance. And so I'm going to yield now to Mr. Melby.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to start by introducing Jessica Espinoza, which, as you know, is our treasurer. And she, in the process of cross-training, she's going to be doing this presentation with me for the first time. So it's, I'm really excited for it. As you know, this is my Super Bowl. I'm giving up half of the game, which is going to be a little hard for me, but I'm very excited to do this. If you look at the first page, it still says Monday, September 8th, 2025, and I'm going to keep it that way. Or I kept it this way because that's the day I'm going to ask for permission to advertise. So I know you like to have the information, so you have the packets in front of you. You should have four things in front of you. You should have the packet so you can review everything when you get home. You should have the Form 3, which is the one-page document with levies on it. You should have the bus replacement form, and you should have our Capital Projects form as well. With that being said, I'm going to hand it off to Jessica.
So the goals of the presentation will be to discuss our 2026 budget calendar, the 2026 proposed budget, and 2025, 2026 budgetary actions.
Right. So just a reminder, normally, we have this meeting sometime before the board meeting in September. On September 8th, we will have our normal board meeting. At that time, we will ask for permission to advertise. We will not go over this entire presentation again. If there are any questions, you can ask that at that time, but we will be asking for permission on the 8th. On the 9th, we will actually upload it into Gateway and send that off. Then we will have the, on Wednesday, September 24th, we will have a public hearing on the 2026 budget. And then hopefully, on October 6th, we will have the adoption meeting for the 2026 budget. After that, it's a waiting game for the DLGF, and usually, right before New Year, we get our 1782 notice.
Over the last 10 years, we have seen an increase in our net assessed values, other than a slight decrease in 2017. As the board recalls, net assessed value is the taxable property wealth that the school can tax upon. Note that these are all actual numbers for budgeting purposes. For 2026, we will be using a net assessed value of a little over 1.87 million, and this is done in order to ensure that we are able to capture all our levy.
Yes. Again, we want to make sure we use a low net assessed value and higher tax rates to make sure we capture all the levies that we need to provide for our students.
This slide just shows a visual of our net assessed value trends. As you can see, we tend to increase every year, and we do expect a slight increase this year, but for budgeting purposes, we use that lower net assessed value.
Going into this meeting, I did not think I was going to have what we feel is our real net assessed value. It was supposed to be given to us early August. We got it yesterday. So we did find out that we're going to have a 3.4% increase in net assessed value, which is a good thing. So we did look at a couple of things, and as you know, we always have Baker-Tilly review the budget after we're done. They did review this. We talked about we had policy analytic numbers and Baker-Tilly numbers. Well, it looks like Baker-Tilly numbers were a little bit better. So they were, they said somewhere between a 2% and 3% increase this year. They thought in the net assessed value, and then it was going to decrease from there, where policy analytics thought it might decrease right away. So this is good news that we ended up with a 3.4% increase in our net assessed value.
Our main source of revenue comes from state funding. We will be receiving $7,148 per pupil from state tuition support in 2026. This is a slight increase from what we received last year. So here, we can see the last 10 years of ADM and per pupil history amounts. Our per pupil amount has increased every year, but we do expect a slight dip in ADM this year, which will impact our revenue in the education fund. We also have to keep in mind that included in our per pupil amount is also our textbook reimbursement from the state.
Right. So the curriculum materials are now being put into our basic grant, so that definitely skews the numbers. When you look at the number for 2026, it's in red because those are estimates. The last time I did check with Mr. Trippenfeldt, we were at 4, 0, 1, 2, 4,012, so we were one different than when we estimated. We're hoping to go up a little bit from there, but again, as you know, ADM will go up and down a little bit until the count date, and we'll let you know how it all shakes out. The other thing I want to point out, really, when it comes to revenue for schools, districts, there's three main things that decide our revenue. One is ADM, which is on the slide. So a slight dip, this isn't what anybody would say is a major dip. This is less than a, this is a small dip in there. But ADM, per pupil amount, is the second one, and the third one is the net assessed value. So the net assessed value going up is good. Our per pupil amount going up is good, although it's not as much as it sort of seems, and hopefully, our ADM is going to stay stable like it is.
And here is just a visual of our ADM in comparison to our per pupil amounts. As you can see, overall, our ADM does tend to stay pretty flat.
So when you look at this slide, again, ideally, the black line and the red line would both be going up. That would mean both, two of the three are great. As you know, from seeing the fiscal indicators every year, having a relatively flat ADM is actually good. The state of Indiana, overall, ADM is decreasing, and the fact that we're staying flat, that's a pretty good sign.
Bill, do we know what the, where we stand as far as the reimbursement per pupil, you know, for the state? Like, we're at 7,148. Do we know what the other?
So that information, that's a great question. In years past, we were very close to the bottom, like 364 out of 370-ish schools. They're always a year to a year and a half behind on getting the information, so where we're at now, I do not have that information. As soon as I get it, I will definitely share it at a board meeting, though. That's a great question. This next slide is the Form 54 from the Department of Education. Again, this is the Department of Education's form. It is developed by the Department of Education, and it is an estimate. So this is not Bill Melby's form. This is not Jessica Espinoza's form. This is the Department of Education's form. It is a very good form, but you have to know that everything on here is an estimate. They give you this tool to give you an idea of where your revenue's going to come in at. So if you look at the fiscal year 2024, 2025, those are actual numbers. The ADM is our two count dates averaged together and rounded, but the other numbers, the basic grant, those are actual numbers, and they, in that fiscal year, we brought in over 31,700,000 in the education fund. This year, in '25, '26, they are estimating with the 4,011 ADM that we're going to bring in approximately $800,000 more than we did previously, which they're saying is a 2.52% increase. But they're not taking into account, we no longer get the curriculum materials, which is somewhere between 615 and $650,000. So if you take that, those dollars off, if our ADM goes up a little bit, we're going to come in around $200,000 more than we received last year. But if you look at the percentage of change on the far column, you'll see most of them are negatives. But we still, the overall percentage, even though it says 2.52, we're going to come in in the first year approximately .64%. So we're not going to even hit 1% increase.
In the education fund, the vast majority of our revenue comes from basic grant, which is in the formula that Bill just explained. And we also do receive summer school reimbursement from the state. We are expecting to bring in $160,000 from preschool tuition. Reimbursements would be from our ECAs for transportation fees or paying their athletic employees. And then the curriculum materials dollars, that is part of the basic grant, like Bill just explained. And then other would be like our reimbursements we receive from Dell. So we are estimating our education fund revenue in 2026 to be a little over 32.8 million.
Correct. And you guys know how I do this. You've been here for a long time. Summer school reimbursement is probably going to be a little higher, but I always estimate low, because unless I have the money in my pocket or in the school's pocket, I don't like to estimate those things high. Same thing with preschool tuition. It's probably going to be a little bit higher. And I also put the zero in for curriculum materials, because when there's a change, I'd like you to see it one year after the change. Hey, this used to be something we received, now we're not getting it anymore, so it is now a zero there. But the big thing, most of the money is from our basic grant. So this next slide, and all of the slides that we talk about, when we talk about our budget by object code, we paired the line items, which on the screen is cut off a little bit. I apologize. That's why we printed it off. Hopefully, the one in front of you can see it all. We pair it with how we match it up in our cash sheets, so it's something that you can compare. In our education fund by budget by object code, you will notice that salaries and benefits are approximately 90% of our entire spending, which is what you would expect, right? We are in the people business. We're educating kids, and our teacher, we have our teachers to do so. Most of our dollars are paying for people. We also have hardware and software. We have supplies. We have a pile of miscellaneous items out of the education fund, travel and professional development, payments to COOP, and curriculum materials. Curriculum materials are the one thing that's going to be probably added to your cash sheets moving forward, because that's something now we're spending out of the education fund. We do, on the bottom line, so that first column is the percentages that we're using. Without the transfer, you know we do transfer funds from the education fund to the operations fund. It will not be $5 million. It will be less than that. I'll explain that in slides to come. If you wanted to see what the percentages were with that transfer, that's what the far right-hand column is.
Here you can see our education fund appropriations, budget, and approved amounts. Since 2019, we have always been approved for what we have asked, and we believe this trend will continue, because we have the financial standing to support our budget.
That's a great point. For those of you that have been around for a long time, and I've gotten rid of the bad news, but before 2019, there were, every other year, actually, we would submit a budget, and they would cut it significantly. The reason why we don't get cut anymore is, quite honestly, the great leadership by the board, the superintendents in the past, and the finances, financial standing that we're in now. So we do not see us being cut for our budget. The other thing is, we don't always spend all of the budget. We have the budget number out there. We don't want to go out and ask for additional appropriations like we weren't planning, but there are some things that we don't know. In the education fund, if we have more students, well, guess what? We're going to hire more teachers, probably. So there's a lot of things that may change. We've been coming in in the education fund over the last two years at approximately spending 85% of our appropriations. I think the number's going to get closer to 100, but it'll be probably around 87, 88% this year without variable change. Again, if we get an influx of 100 students, I'm going to come back and tell you the number's a little different, but we will stay under this budgetary number. So as I said earlier, I would talk about the transfer from education to operations. Back in 2018, I believe, they changed the rules. They used to have what was known as the general fund and the capital projects fund and all those other good things, and now we have the education and operations fund. They narrowed it down. When they did that, they changed the formulas of what you spent out of each fund. So once they realized they changed it and it didn't really proportionately fit, they gave you a rule that you can send 15%, up to 15% of the revenue, total revenue in the education fund, over to the operations fund. So again, we budgeted for $5 million. If we did that, that's going to be around 15.23%. You know as well as I do, I'm going to track that all year long, and at the end, come December, we were going to make sure that number is under 19%. But I do want you to look at that middle column on the red side over there. Before the rules changed, the max was in 2014. What they should have, if the rules are the same now, to cover it, you would have had to spend, send over 32.77% to cover that change. The minimum was over 21%, and the average was almost 27%. So it's a great reminder, our operations fund will be the weakest fund if we don't do things that we've been doing to make it as strong as it is. The reality is, it's very strong because of the investments that we're making, and also, we're making smart decisions, and I will also say preventative maintenance for Mr. Begley, the things that we're fixing or tweaking beforehand, so it's not a major cost on the backside of it. Those are some of the great reasons on where we're at, where we're at. Next one is curriculum materials. I've already mentioned it, so I won't spend long on this, but again, we have budgeted for the last, well, for a 10-year period, we know around $650,000. Now, that's a little bit more than we, what we expect from the state before they changed the rules. We were getting between 615 and 650, but we also had a cash balance in our curriculum materials fund, which you know we had to transfer over to the education fund at the end of 2024. So that has been done. As long as we're sticking to that plan, and we also have our technology plan, which you are well aware of, which we provided all new computers for our students this year, we are going to be fine.
Our remaining funds that we budget for are funded locally. These are our tax-bearing funds. The first one is the referendum. Thanks to the community, we do have a referendum fund. We have around six years left on it. Our tax rate is 41 cents, and this tax rate cannot change, so this is the fund that would take the biggest hit if our net assessed value were to go down.
That's exactly right. Obviously, this referendum is vital for the school district. Without this referendum, we wouldn't be able to provide the programs and the people that we have now and that we have in place for our students. So as we've said in other meetings, and I know you've heard me talk for hours, if our net assessed value does go down, it will hurt our referendum fund the most. That's where the largest decrease in levy will come.
And the following is a list of everything that the referendum fund currently pays for. It could fluctuate throughout the year, but for the most part, this is around where it stays. We also do budget for our insurance to come out of the referendum fund. Like, as Bill mentioned, without the referendum, we wouldn't be able to sustain all of these positions and the programs that we have in place for our students.
All right. So this next slide is the referendum fund budget by object code. You are going to see that, again, approximately 90% of our spending out of the referendum fund is people. Again, people business, that's where we're spending our money. You saw on the last slide that approximately 68. And the reason why I say approximately 68 is sometimes teachers move on, and we hire somebody a week later. Well, it's not a full teacher then. It's a little bit less than a full teacher, and that happens more with subs and maybe custodians. So sometimes there's a little lax. That's why it's approximate. But 90% of our spending in the referendum fund will be on people. We no longer use our referendum fund for travel and professional development. All of that would come out of our education or operations fund, depending on what position the person had. And we do have our property liability and bus insurance coming from the referendum as well. That's a big variable. Actually, in 2020, last year, it went down for the first time in a long, long time. We expect it to bounce back and come back up. We have done a lot of things. Again, Mr. Begley has instituted a lot of things that has helped us, but our claims have been down, so the numbers were down. Our claims really haven't been up, but I still think it's going to go up. Last year, they were saying the average school district was going up around 14%, and since we went down, that was a great thing. They haven't given us an average for this year yet, but I do see us going up. In our operations fund budget by object code, this one's a little bit busier. Obviously, in our operations fund, there's a lot more items that we spend money on. In this fund, 45% of the dollars spent will be on people. A lot of the people coming out of the operations fund are custodians, or maintenance, or mechanics, and so on. Some administrators come out of the operations fund as well. We do have some travel and professional development. Yes, we've had our mechanics in the past going on professional development, and we have excellent mechanics. I think they're fantastic. Supplies is something that's always, you know, we have our, everything from floor wax to toilet paper to anything that you can think of as supply that's not educational will come out of our operations fund. And our utilities, we are always planning that our utilities costs are going to go up significantly. If you look, other than people, our highest costs are utilities, purchase of buses, and supplies. So those are the three largest costs. We know, we've talked about it, we do have buses that are going to be coming due. We have increased our, or exchanged several buses over the last year. I think it was around seven, if I'm not mistaken, and we will be doing some more next year as well. One of the biggest cost increases, you know, we talk about construction a lot, but the cost of a school bus has really gone through the roof. I think my first year, I remember it being like $80,000 a school bus, and now you have to budget closer to $200,000, $215,000 for a school bus. You will also see that's a little bit different, but I think you remember me from the past, our insurance, the property liability and bus insurance, I do double-budget it. I budget approximately 50% of it from this fund too, because I do have the flexibility to pay it out of both. And why do I need that flexibility? Well, if the net assessed value does dip at the last second, I don't know about it. Well, then I can't afford to pay as much out of the referendum fund, and then I have to budget for out of the operations fund as well. So that is our operations fund by object code.
Mr. Melby, I just wanted to take a quick second and just mention, I know you're going to talk about this a little more as we go on, but the difficulty here with the variability in a lot of these, and I think that has grown over the past eight years since we've been on the, I've been on the board. You mentioned school buses, I mean, construction costs. Mr. Begley, I've asked you repeatedly at meetings about availability and cost and supply and demand issues, and I know we do have some relief via some of the investments. I know that's not a part of this, but just, I don't know, to kind of comment on the difficulties of, you know, you mentioned utilities specifically. I remember a couple of years ago, coming to you, mentioning something that I heard at one of the town council meetings, just, you know, water's going up, like you're hearing all this news about NIFSCO. So in the face of that, in the face of these difficulties of what the state is proposing, I think your conservative approach is just an excellent way to play. And even with that, it's just, it's difficult, and I appreciate the work you're doing. I just wanted to comment on that. It just, you keep bringing that up. All of these line items are just, there's just a lot of variables at play, so that's just worth mentioning.
Well, thank you. And it's a great point, too, because when I first sat in this position, I remember talking to financial advisors, and they say, well, you have to plan on a 2% or 3% increase on non-people costs. Well, that number is now up to 5% to 7% increase. So it is definitely an ever-changing. We try to follow the numbers as much as we can. Jessica's always pulling numbers for me, or Lindsay, where I'm, hey, give me the numbers on supplies for the last five years, and then we're tracking where we're, give me the numbers on utilities for the last five years. Let's see where we were for the last five years, and let's try to plan for the next 10 years, knowing there's going to be a lot of variable change in there. Yes, sir. I got one. This next slide is for all debt budgets in 2026. Every time I see this slide, I always go, man, why do schools have debt? Again, this is extremely important. It's just like a house. It's just like, I consider it like a mortgage. You get the house up front, or, and then you're paying for it over time. When you have a school district, and the school district that's years old, you're going to have to replace carpets. You're going to have to replace roofs. You're going to have to replace HVAC. So what you do in schools, the mechanism is to go out and get debt. You go bond, and then you get the debt, and then we have to pay that debt back off. The task is to make sure we're keeping our tax rate and the levy as close to level as possible, so we're not hurting our taxpayers, which we'll get into that more in a little bit. On here, we have the debt lease rental for 2026. You will see the zero for textbook, the textbook fund reimbursement. We no longer get that, since we don't get to charge for fees anymore. So that's a zero. School pension debt, this is going to be the last year. You see this on the slide. It falls off at the end of 2026. So we'll be down to two line items under our debt, and then you see the referendum debt. This number is going to be the most exact number you're going to see in everything. I don't have to worry about some variable change, because it's just like your mortgage at home. I know what that cost is. That's why you see the dollar, $132 at the end. Yes, we're very specific. We're going to be within a couple of dollars of that number. And I love this slide, and I put it in there, and it goes right along the lines of debt. Every time we talk about debt, you know our S&amp;P rating back in 2019, we were BB status, which was junk bond status. We've jumped up over seven spots. We are at an A-plus standing right now, and we've been there since 2023. So this is, again, another testament what the people I'm looking across have done for this district. We are now one of the higher schools in the state of Indiana. I was hoping to move to the next one, and I really believe we would or could move to the next group, which is AA-, but with Senate Enroll Act Number 1, we have to see how S&amp;P interprets that. So I'm still hoping, but I can't guarantee it where before I would have really thought it was going to happen. Well, the next time we will know is the next time we go out for a bond issuance. So when we're planning on going out for a bond issuance, and as you know, we did the 2024 mortgage bond, we only did half of it, so we have the other half coming in 2026. Before then, myself, Dr. Hicks, Ms. Espinoza, will be having a meeting with S&amp;P. How that meeting goes, it's a conversation, it's a long conversation with a lot of documents being shared back and forth. It's a long process. After that meeting, then they give us the response. Then we can respond to the response, and then it's the final response.
Were you ever part of a ratings call prior in either of your roles? Have you been part of, like, for us, from municipal ratings call? It is a wide-ranging conversation. They want to know all of the economic factors that play into the variables within your school district. I just went through it last year, and it really is, like, as someone who is fascinated about the economics that drive our business, it really is one of the most intriguing conversations you'll be a part of, because it feels like the Spanish Inquisition. They ask you about everything happening in your community and adjacent communities, where people work, how they commute, what your commuter trends are. It is a fascinating conversation, and we'll make sure we sharpen our pencils heading into that conversation, because it is a big variable in where you land on this rating sheet. So our balance sheet is better than it's been, but there are some of the factors that are just outside of our control that will sometimes drive this ratings down a little bit, so.
And I will say, since you gave that little prelude, my team is so fantastic. They give me such great numbers, and the fact that we can project out 10 and 11 years and be semi-accurate, because that's a long way to go, and then we have different variables. I can't do that unless they're doing their job. So it's, they're fantastic.
Well, I'm glad, Dr. Hicks, you mentioned that. I don't think people, I mean, we've hammered it home, but I don't think people realize either to go from A to A+ is a massive, massive deal, and to go jump seven spots in that short amount of time is really, really impressive. But again, it's just, it's continued fiscal conservatism and keeping your eye on the ball and just trying to plan ahead, so hopefully, we'll see that.
AA-, double A.
Next, we have our rainy day fund. We increase our rainy day fund by transfers from the education or operations fund, and to spend those dollars, the board has to approve a resolution. In 2026, we have budgeted to spend $7 million, but this is only done as a safeguard to have the funds appropriated, just in case we were to need them. This doesn't necessarily mean that we're planning on spending $7 million.
Correct. And that's a great point. The eight years I've been here, I budgeted money from the rainy day fund every year, and we have spent $0 out of the rainy fund every year. Again, I would be foolish if I didn't plan for, if a boiler goes down, or a roof goes down, a roof goes down in a school, that's a half a million dollars sometimes, so we have to plan for those. That's why you have the rainy day fund itself. But again, I am hoping that we spend $0 again out of the rainy day fund. So the Capital Projects Fund, and I did give you the handouts. I'm not going to go over each line item on those, because I know you guys like to take them home, look at them, but through meetings throughout the couple, last couple of years, you've heard about almost everything on those lists already. The plan is for projects that are in capital nature that exceed $10,000, and for capital expenditures that exceed $10,000. So basically, the two different piles are things that are attached to a building, going into a building, staying into a building, and then things that may not, that can move around, and so on. So those are the two plans. I can't take credit for these plans, although Mr. Begley and I and Mr. Podskul have met several times over the years on these. Mr. Begley has really done most of the work for the Capital Projects Plan. In the, these are, the next is the bus replacement plan. We've also given you another handout on that, because I know you want to look at that as well. This was a plan that we were supposed to not have to do after a couple of years, but they keep on having us come back and do it. It is a five-year bus replacement plan. We currently have Uh, it is a five-year bus replacement plan. We currently have thirty-nine buses in our fleet. We are planning, again, we, one of the reasons we are fiscally sound is we don't get rid of the old, older bus just because it's older. Sometimes those are your best buses. Uh, we get rid of them when it's time to get rid of them. A lot of our older buses are the safest buses for our students. If they are not, we will replace them and we obviously have. And we have more to replace moving forward. The next page, uh, in the slide, I got a couple of pages behind here. Next, uh, page is if we do replace the five buses each year, how much it would approximately cost, so we can plan for that moving ahead. It is interesting. In two thousand and twenty-six, replacing five buses is less than twenty twenty-seven, which is, uh, twenty twenty-seven is also, twenty twenty-eight is also less. It's because it's not the same buses. Some of the smaller buses cost a little bit less money. I was looking at it at first, I was like, oh, the numbers can't be, no, they're right. Several of those buses are smaller buses in those piles. And again, Mr. Begley and his mechanic, Matt DiHusson, uh, do a great job putting this together for us. So the last page is just basically compiling all that information into one slide for you. So in twenty twenty-six, twenty-seven through thirty, the cost if we did replace all five of those buses. And again, that is the plan.
So this chart compares the advertised tax rates versus final state-approved tax rates over the last few years. You will notice that our final approved tax rates are lower than what we advertise. For example, in twenty twenty-five, we advertised a total tax rate of a dollar fifty-nine, but our state final approved tax rate was a dollar twenty-six. And we also want to advertise a lower net assessed value and a higher tax rate to maximize the levy we will need to meet the needs of our students.
Right. That, and that, that's perfect. The, again, the questions that you may get is, whoa, that tax rate is really high. The advertised tax rate is not what we're going for. We have to do that because I didn't receive the net assessed value until yesterday. I've been working on this for four months. So I have to make some assumptions to make sure we have the funds that we need for our students. I will tell you, we're asking to advertise a dollar seventy-six. I believe the net assessed, or excuse me, the tax rate when it is all said and done will be approximately a dollar twenty-seven to a dollar twenty-eight. So as you recall, the board promised the community they would stay, do their best to stay under a dollar forty-one. Again, we're going to be, I am very confident we'll be under a dollar thirty. But again, there are some variable changes before December, but I'm estimating right around a, a dollar twenty-seven, five. So right between a dollar twenty-seven and a dollar twenty-eight. Yes, sir.
I do want to remind the board that this year, the, the net AV appears to have gone up. We still, we still have a whole year to watch that collection rate. The predictions on the collection rate are not as high as they normally are. I don't know what the, what is the traditional collection rate?
Well, our collection rate is very, very high in Muntzer. It's been over ninety-six percent in the past years. Uh, the, the very interesting thing for me is Senate Enrolled Act One, all those variables that, the minus three hundreds, the minus hundred and fifties, how that will impact, that's a great point, Dr. Hicks. It won't impact the rate as much, but it will impact the levy. So that's a great point.
So we'll, we'll, we'll go through the DLGF, the Department of Local Government Finance. I say DLGF like it's your, in your daily world like it is in ours, but the Department of Local Government Finance reviews our budget. They're the ones who around Christmas time, and it is always after we've gone on break, usually around New Year's Day, we're on pins and needles waiting to get this, this document that tells us what they've cut us to. They'll regulate us. The thing I want you guys to know is as you have conversations with people who ask about this rate, make sure you're abundantly clear that this year, we hope it will stay close to where it has been. But we don't know that we'll be able to keep our promise of a dollar forty-one because that debt service rate is not optional. We are mandated by state law to pay off our mortgage forever until it's paid. And if we have to float the rate to get the amount of money it takes to pay our debts off, we will have to do it. So we're very fortunate. Our, our, our STAB, our, our net AV looks good right now, but we haven't been through a collection cycle under the new law. So remain optimistic that it will not hurt us. However, we need to be prepared to have the conversation with our public, uh, next year if it floats our rate because of the impact of this AV. So.
That's another great point. So what could happen is the tax rate increases, but the amount of money the taxpayers are paying decreases, even though the tax rate increased. So that, that's the, the math that we're going to have to be working through moving forward. And also, I, I guess I should point out over the last several years, we have actually gotten approved for a certain rate and the board has actually said, you know, we could do with a little bit less and we manually decreased it. We have a one-week window to do that. Once you get your seventeen eighty-two notice, you have, I think it's seven, maybe eleven days, uh, to, uh, go over those numbers and then, is it ten? Oh, darn. Well, it was in between those two numbers. Uh, you have ten days to manipulate that. And sometimes if we knew we were going to be fine that year because net assessed values went up more than we thought, we'd actually even decrease that a little bit as well.
To make sure we stay on track with our budget, we do have a CFP that we follow that Baker Tilly provides for us. Bill also does a great job with our projections. He builds projections out to ten years, which help us plan for the future and just have better data to support any financial decisions we're making. And we do reevaluate our debt management plan every year with guidance from Baker Tilly and Jeff Quackenbush. And we have a curriculum material plan set in place to ensure we're staying within our six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we've budgeted for. And lastly, tracking our ADM and just adjusting our numbers accordingly will help us be prepared for any variances.
Correct. Uh, the, you, we don't talk about debt a lot, uh, but today we were on with Baker Tilly and Jeff Quackenbush talking about options moving forward and where we're at. So those meetings happen a lot behind the doors and then we bring up the question to you, where do we want to go from there?
So we have plans for variances and they are now here, especially with uncertainties in the property and income tax revenues caused by Senate Enrolled Act One. We need to make sure that we're making budgetary adjustments to stay ahead of the curve. Um, as you may know, the formula for the property taxes has changed. So we need to make sure that we are managing our tax rates in order to maximize our levy to be able to meet the needs of our students. And we do review our budget in comparison to our actual expenditures monthly and Bill adjusts his projections accordingly every month. And this is presented to the board every month through our cash sheets, so we are definitely staying ahead of the curve. I think as long as we are continuing to monitor all of this, we will be on track to provide for our students.
And that is, uh, the last sheet that you have is the Form Three. It's one of the forms that you have to fill out in Gateway. Uh, the columns in the, the form, just so you can go over it again, you have the dates that the meetings are going to happen. Uh, then you do have the property tax credit estimate. I hope they are way off on that number. That number is provided to us by, uh, the DLGF. Last year it was considerably off. I'm hoping it's going to be off again. But to just go over really quick, you have the bus, budget estimate is in that column two, so those are the numbers we're talking about. Column three are the levies that would have to be gained to meet that budget. Column five is the current tax levy. And then current, uh, six is the rate of change. Now, remember the rate of changes, those aren't right, right? Because we have to use high tax rates. So if somebody's asking, are you really going to have a twenty percent increase? And no, we're, we're not. But we have to budget that way because if the net assessed value wouldn't have come in yesterday, I couldn't have adjusted everything in, in time anyhow, to be quite honest. We have to plan for the worst and then adjust. So those will all come out in the wash and then we're going to be right around that dollar twenty-seven, which is a half a pen, maybe a penny-ish higher than last year. So it's always going to look like that, but sometimes when you only see it once a year, you get a little nervous like, whoo, why are we having that increase? We're not really having that increase. We just have to budget for it. And that is our presentation. Uh, first, I think Jessica did an amazing job. She does much better than I do. So maybe that'll be, uh, keys. You can kick me to the curb and you can do this next year. But do you have any questions on the twenty twenty-six budget?
So this is, this is more of a planning question, but we have the adoption meeting on October sixth. That's not a board, regular board meeting. I thought we usually do it at a regular board meeting.
Fourth is the budget hearing that's required by the Department of Local Government Finance. And then you have to, there's a cooling off period.
You have to have a space in between.
And then I think our month, our October meeting is a week early.
Oh, it is.
It's a fall break.
Wow, I need to check my calendar. Okay, thank you. The other thing I wanted to say was with the Senate Enrolled Act One, um, we are so fortunate and I'm going to shout out to Mr. Melby and the administration from the last few years. The state basically has pushed local government into making some really tough decisions and we are very well-prepared for it. Doesn't mean we're going to be rolling in the dough, but we are prepared. There are many local governments, school districts and towns, villages, cities that are in trouble. And I just, I'm so fortunate and thankful to work with such a team that has had the foresight to rainy day, even though I know that's not the rainy day fund, but you put us in a good position. We'll still be fiscally responsible. But I, I am so worried about some of these other entities.
I am very worried as well and it, it's a team effort. I have a great team, um, in my financial office. It's great having people that are intelligent and understand dollars when I'm talking to. So it, it's been my complete pleasure.
I just want to say too, I think the, the community is also very supportive and very understanding, um, very responsible and thinking of, you know, your own personal finances and, and how, how these things apply. You know, thinking about debt and, and we talk about that and bonding and things like that. For you to, to mention, it's like, well, it's like having a mortgage. Like that's not going away. You got to pay it. There's just things you have to pay for. Uh, things happen. There's variables in, in your life, uh, you know, personally. And that affects the money that's coming in to your personal household. So I think people understand that. They value education here and that is also a, a factor in this, that we've been fortunate to have such strong support from our community. And just want to, want to say thank you as often as I can for that as well.
Yes, sir. If you have any questions over the next week, we have until the eighth, uh, and then we'll ask permission to advertise then.
Any other questions, guys? Okay, that now concludes our work session.
Great job, Jessica.
Great job.